Eighteenth of twenty twenty five and we have some folks in the audience and we welcome all of you here today. A couple of housekeeping items, we'll note that the meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. And would also ask if you have any type of an electronic communication device, if you'd please put it on silent or vibrate, we'd appreciate your doing that. We always begin our meeting with the pledge of allegiance and then we would ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. Mr. Vannasco, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, everybody. Vanessa, could you please roll?
Commissioner Sanado?
Here.
Commissioner Vogler.
Here. We have a quorum. Commissioner Kennedy is on well-deserved break this week and both Mr. Sanado and I are here and as long as there are two of us who are here, that constitutes quorum, which means we're able to conduct our business. Hopefully, everybody got a copy of the agenda. If you need one, it's over next to Vanessa. Next on the agenda would be explanation of procedures to the audience. We set aside time twice during our meeting for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and then one before we adjourn. If you have some comments to make, we welcome them, you're welcome to speak both times. If you choose to only speak one of the two times, that's fine, or if you're just here to listen, that's fine. We do ask that your comments be related to county government matters and if you can try to limit your time to about five minutes or so, we appreciate that courtesy given our schedules. Next on the agenda would be row officer reports and comments. We set aside time if any of our elected row officers have anything they wish to discuss, but they're not compelled to be here, they're not required to be here. We do give them the opportunity. This morning, none of our row officers are with us. So that takes us to public comment and if you do have something you'd like to pass along to us, we'll recognize you if you can state your name and then we'll listen to what you have to say. I see some new folks on this side.
Yes.
Please.
My name is Kelsey Schner and I am the executive director of CASA of Midwest PA. I was hoping that I could introduce the program and read our press release today and then before I leave, I will leave my business cards and some of our materials here just in case anybody would benefit from those.
And if I might interrupt you.
Yes.
Apologize.
Yeah.
Glad you started because the lady walking in behind you is the reporter from the Newcastle News.
Oh, wonderful.
And once she gets settled in, I'll ask you to kind of rewind and start over if you don't mind.
Absolutely. I want to get my.
That way she can have the benefit of hearing your report as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Certainly.
And thank you for having me.
Oh, it's our pleasure. We'll give Debbie a minute or two to get settled in.
Absolutely.
Morning Debbie. I'll have to pack it for you when we're done. And we just got to a public comment and Kelsey.
Sure.
N-E-R.
S-C-H-N-E-R. N-U-R.
Excuse me. S-C-H-N-U-R. I apologize.
Much closer than most people get.
And Kelsey is with us and she is with an organization that is here at the courthouse during the week and she was just getting ready to give her update to us and an introductory report, so please.
Yes, thank you.
And you don't have to stand.
Are you sure?
If you're whatever, you know, be pleased to be comfortable.
Okay, okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. So we are looking, CASA of Midwest PA is urgently seeking volunteers to advocate for children in foster care. CASA of Midwest, or court-appointed special advocates, is urgently seeking compassionate community members to advocate for children who have experienced abuse or neglect. By becoming a CASA volunteer, you can provide a stable, consistent presence for children navigating the foster system, ensuring their voices are heard and their needs are met. To learn more and register for an upcoming information session, visit casamidwestpa.org. Sessions cover the CASA program, the role of a volunteer, and the training and support provided. To register, visit our website. What is CASA? CASA is the only program of its kind assigning trained volunteers to advocate for the best interests of children in foster care. These children face uncertainty and instability and CASA volunteers provide a steady presence, gathering information from those involved in the child's life, such as parents, teachers, and counselors, and making recommendations to the court. CASA volunteers ensure children's voices are heard and help prioritize their journey to a safe, permanent home. The need is urgent. In Pennsylvania, over twenty-nine thousand children are in foster care. CASA of Midwest PA needs more volunteers to ensure every child has the support they deserve. How to get involved? No experience is required, just a commitment to helping children thrive. CASA of Midwest PA provides all necessary training and support to prepare volunteers for this rewarding world.
Kelsey, thank you for noting that, we'll add it into the record and I can tell you that your organization was brought to the attention of the Board of Commissioners by Judge David Acker. And Judge Acker spent some time talking with us and said he was extolling the virtues of your organization and asked the Board of Commissioners if we would be able to provide a small amount of office space for when you do visit the courthouse. So we were able to find right down the hall here, I wonder if that's working out for you.
Yes, very much so.
But so we appreciate Judge Acker's interest, but I'm going to ask, could you, if you're able to, share a little bit about when you're here and what it is you do when you're here?
Yes, absolutely. So we are a regional program, so Clarion, Lawrence, and Mercer County, but Lawrence is by double largest of those three counties in terms of children in foster care. So Lawrence County is my main office with some rare visits to Mercer and Clarion. Our hope is, you know, we are in the process of hiring other individuals to be seated in those counties. So primarily, I am here Monday through Friday. However, when I'm not here, I'm in those other counties and I am reachable, I have my contact information on my business card. And while I'm here, I've been, I appreciate everybody in the courthouse so much, the office is perfect, people have to come in and see me because the safe is in there. So I have got to meet lots of individuals that way, make connections, and I'm very appreciative to that. We're really building, advertising, recruiting, and making those established partnerships with CYS and with the courts. So I appreciate everybody has been very, very welcoming and very supportive of the initiative and I think that we're going to accomplish some great things.
We're happy to have you. I found that one of the comments you made interesting in that County of Mercer has a larger population than Lawrence County. They've got about twenty thousand more people than we have, but did I hear you correctly that the number of foster parents or foster children is higher in Lawrence County than it is in Mercer?
Yes, the number of children in care, so it's almost double that of the other two counties, yes.
I could understand Clarion because it's a smaller county than Lawrence.
Yes.
But again, our neighbors to the north are actually larger than us.
Yes.
So that's interesting.
It is. But I think the wonderful thing is that both, well, all three of those counties, but with Clarion and Mercer being so closely connected to each other, really great resources, that I think that this is going to be a natural fit into the community and be an accepted support.
Good.
Thank you.
And then, of course, our role as commissioners, we do have direct oversight of our CYS office. Standpoint of they report to the commissioners, of course, as you know, they also report to the State Office of Children, Youth, and Families, I think I O-C-Y-S, I think I got that right. On the other hand, the courts, particularly Judge Acker, who's the judge in charge of family court, they're of course separate from the Board of Commissioners. Judge does not report to the commissioners, obviously, but we do enjoy a good working relationship, not only with Judge Acker, but with the other judges upstairs. So no, he was a strong, strong advocate for your organization and we are a little pressed for space in this building, but I'm glad we were able to accommodate.
I greatly appreciate it. Judge Acker has been down several times to check in and it's more than, more than workable.
Good.
I'm just really happy to be located where so many things are going on in the building, so many people are in and out. It has been really helpful for me to meet, you know, the appropriate partner, so I'm very appreciative of all the support that we've had.
Our pleasure.
Yeah, thank you.
My colleague is Commissioner Sanada and I'm going to see if Chris has any questions for you.
I appreciate your efforts and how many days a week are you going to be?
Yeah.
All for help.
I am here full-time except when I am visiting the other locations. So this is my, on paper, my main office.
Okay.
Yes.
How long will you be here, are you consistent?
Permanent.
Permanent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, now I will say that as we grow, like I said, we are hiring staff, so, but that, we're still in the very beginning, so I don't see any change.
Okay.
Very sad.
You're right, Judge Acker, as Chairman Vogler said, he was very enthusiastic about this, he thinks he can help children and I think that's what I think everyone's concerned with.
Yeah, absolutely. He has been a wonderful support and like you said, the goal is to help children, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you joining us and coming in to tell us a little bit about your organization. You are welcome to stick around if you'd like, if you do have to head down the hall, we certainly understand.
Okay, we know where to find me.
Yes, we.
Thank you guys so much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Kelsey. We're right upstairs if you ever need it.
Okay, wonderful, thank you again, take care.
Thank you, Kelsey. Take care.
Thank you.
We have another visitor, Mr. Conforti, Craig Conforti from Penn State Extension. Craig, I'm not sure if you're just here to listen today or if you have something you'd like to share.
No, yeah, yeah, I was going to share with some stuff with you guys.
Please, we're glad to have you.
Well, thank you. Well, as always, I appreciate your support, so thank you to the commissioners for the allocation, for the constant working in support of Penn State Extension. So my name is Craig Conforti, I'm the Client Relationship Manager for Extension, so I cover a seven-county area for Extension and Beaver County is my own base. Couple announcements that I wanted to make, first one, talked earlier, Commissioner Vogler, about the announcement of Western PA's Diagnostic Lab, so that is going to be located at Penn State Beaver's campus, Commonwealth Campus, for agriculture in western Pennsylvania and eastern Ohio. This is an awesome investment by the state, so we're thankful for your guys' support when it came time to support Penn State's location or our plan to locate it at Penn State Beaver. Also, we hired a couple agronomists, so we hired an agronomist, Stephen Campbell, he's going to be located in our Butler office, but he's also going to have some responsibility for Lawrence County. We also hired Erin Compricka, who's also an agronomist, and she's stationed in Mercer County, and she's also going to have some responsibility for Lawrence County. And also, we replaced our animal systems educator in the Mercer County office, you might recognize her name, her name is Maddie Horcler, she is a, she grew up in the 4H, 4H system here in Lawrence County, the family in Lawrence County, her family's farms here in Lawrence County, so she has some deep roots here, but she's hit the ground running and this position is a general, general animal livestock position, but she does have a background in sheep and goats, which small numbers is growing as a commodity here in Pennsylvania. Also wanted to let you guys know, and I'll be able to send a flyer to you if we haven't done that already, we have an auction coming up, which is a 4H auction that's held annually. I think this is the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth, maybe it's the twenty-sixth annual auction, and that's Saturday, March twenty-second, and that's starting at six o'clock, and it's going to be held at the New Englander. So 4H is accepting donations, people, club members, communities, business, donate an item and that's what 4H uses as an auction. That money goes into scholarships and I think Cassidy just told me today that over thirty-one thousand dollars was provided in scholarships this year, or this past year, for kiddos, 4Hers here in Lawrence County that are going to either state events or regional events, so it helps them and their families with those costs. Speaking of 4H, last year, we ended the year with three hundred and thirty-one club members and nine hundred and twenty-three group enrollments. So in total, 4H reached a thousand two hundred and fifty-four kids here in Lawrence County and we're hoping to make that grow even more this year. And last but not least, we're always looking for 4H volunteers, so if you guys have any recommendations of volunteers or clubs or organizations that are looking to do volunteer work, please, please let us know. Contact them. But as always, thank you for the time and thank you for constantly supporting us. I really appreciate the relationship that we have here in Lawrence County.
Craig, thank you, it's always nice to have you here and we always appreciate the updates that you give us. I do have a quick question for you.
Sure.
And you may have already told me this, do you happen to know the next date of the Ag Resource Network meeting?
Oh, boy.
If, if.
It is this, it is this month and I can, give me a quick second, I should be able to search it. Thanks for asking about that, because I would, if you need to share that. It might not have reached last schedule yet. Well, what I can do, instead of taking up time, I will, I'll find that.
Send some emails, please?
Yeah, definitely. Thanks for asking about that.
Yeah, we'll try to make an effort to be there.
Yeah, I appreciate it and that, like I said before, those meetings are designed to bring not only, you know, extension, but local farmers and also federal and state agencies to the table so that we can be able to advise you guys on what's happening in the ag world.
I'm going to see if my colleague, Mr. Sanada, has any questions for you.
Craig, I think you're quite thorough, I know that you do a good job with the extension and especially FFA programs. Appreciate all your efforts.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, it's good to see you today and you're always welcome here and as we said to Kelsey, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, if you have other things to do, we understand.
I have tons of emails, so I appreciate being let go and I will try to make it at least quarterly in front of the commissioners so that we can continue sharing this information. I will say that you guys do an awesome job in replying to me and replying to the educators that are here, so again, I just, I can't, I can't say enough how much support that we get from Lawrence County.
You've got a great team, it's easy for us to support you.
You're right there and that's, that makes, that makes me look really good because I appreciate that team.
Craig, you take care and stay warm.
Thanks, guys.
Yes, you do the same. Yes, sir. Thank you for being here. We're still at public comment, does anyone else have a public comment this morning they would wish to make?
I do.
Could you state your name, please?
Terry Buesen.
Yes, sir.
Couple of them, one, I had requested something to be done about the kiosk over that jail wasn't ever done. Number two, I don't understand why the secretary is the only one who handles money here, did not get the money on the books properly over the holidays because she was on holiday and I think it should be investigated.
Help me with that, with your second point, when you say the secretary and the money, what does that relate to?
She handles the money over there.
At the jail?
Yes.
Let me, let me say this, Mr. Buesen, we're meeting right now as the Board of Commissioners. At noon today, the prison board, which is a seven-member board that we're part of, will be holding their public meeting and that would be the appropriate meeting for you to attend because there's only three commissioners, but there are four other people on the prison board that have the oversight of the prison. We'll continue to listen to what you have to say, but the board you need to speak to is the prison board, but please, continue.
Okay, the other one is your lady that Mr. Sanado replaced was given a position over there. You have people with over twenty years' service working over there, more qualified, would have taken the job for less, she was useless as a county commissioner, and why would you donate such a job to her for the money? Now, I was trying to get a couple of newspapers companies, I didn't get it done, but the next time I come, I will have them, so I can get some answers to it because she was totally useless and then you turn around and county commissioners ended up giving her whoever.
The prison board.
The prison board.
Prison board.
Okay, the prison board, okay, when you have people that should be in line for a job and don't get it and you give someone way more money than these people are making, then something's wrong with the people that are on the board, I don't care who it is. But work is on over there, that kiosk, I ended up getting, having to change my number because I couldn't get money on the board, I had to change my password, my credit cards were shut off, all because of what you have over there. People said it would be taken care of, it hasn't been taken care of. And I'm not going to quit until something is done, by the way.
If your schedule permits.
I don't know what will be happening, but I have a crazy one, that's why I'm only here once a while. I am usually busy seventeen hours a day, to be honest.
The prison board does meet today at noon.
All right.
Public meeting in this room, in this room, and you're welcome to attend. Normally, the prison board meets on the third Wednesday of each month at noon in this room. Now, this month, we had to move it back a day, so actually, it's a good thing you came today because again, the prison board does convene at noon, the board consists of the three commissioners, the president judge, the district attorney, the county comptroller, and the sheriff, and that's based on state law. State law dictates that the seven people oversee the operations of the prison, not just the commissioners. So if you're able to come back at noon, that would be the appropriate meeting to attend.
All right, if I can, and nothing comes up, I will be here at noon.
Okay, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of this meeting if you'd like.
All right.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Buesen?
So far, the things that I've seen go on between CYS and different organizations here, it's a disgrace, to be honest, because when I can't file paperwork where people lie on depositions and so forth, our good district attorney's office won't accept them even though they know they're alive, it's on video, it's a joke in this town and that's what's wrong with this town. And it just goes on, I mean, totally, like I say, I tried to get this done last year, things done, and I end up with too many things to do on occasion. I'm retired, but that's beside the point, that's a joke. And, and I was going to attempt to get some news coverage for you from, well, I tried to get to Newcastle News, they don't even return a call, but I will in the near future get the vindicator or Pittsburgh Press involved in some of this. I'm sure it'll make a good story for them if I can't get anything done. And I did not file with the auditor general's office yet, I've done it in the past and I plan on doing it sometime in the future if I don't get anything done because it's the only place I've gotten results here in the county is going through the auditor general and the attorney general's office because you don't get anything done locally, you don't even know where they're at anymore. All right?
Okay, we appreciate you joining us today and we appreciate your comments and again, if you're able to come back at noon, that's when the prison board will be.
I'm firing any unforeseen things, I will return.
Thank you, Mr. Buesen.
You're welcome.
Do you have any other public comments? I'm going to ask Chris if he would be willing to change the agenda's order a little bit. We have thirteen repository properties that we have to address and we have two of our staff folks here under new business. Chris, would you be willing to move planning and public safety up to right now? Do you have any problem with that?
Well, did you want to make your commission comments?
We'll do, how about now, we'll do, let's face it, Sarah, these folks now, they've been here. Yeah, if that's okay with you.
Yes.
All right, yeah, no worries about that, thank you. So we're going to jump ahead under new business, Roman numeral seven, item one is planning and Rebecca Schaefer is with us. Good morning, Rebecca.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you, thank you for your patience. What number would this one be, Vanessa?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, this is proposed resolution twenty-nine. This involves the county's comprehensive plan, we did one about nine or ten years ago and it's time to do another one. I also noticed Mercer County's in the same boat, I think they're starting or maybe in the middle of their comprehensive plan, but you have a proposed resolution for us that would allow us to make application to the Commonwealth Department of Community and Economic Development through their municipal assistance program, but could you fill us in on the details, please?
Yes, so like you said, our last comprehensive plan was in October of twenty sixteen, so we're just getting ahead of the game here. It does take some time, so we are applying with the assistance of Ford Lawrence at the end of the month, I believe, or end of, or it might be mid-March, March fifteenth is the deadline. So what that entails is your commitment to like a fifty-fifty money on the books if we get awarded for the grant. Along with that, you know, on the housing, there will be a part of housing in there, there'll be life remediation and expanding of the infrastructure and transportation assets in the plan. So that's what I'm here for today is to see if we want to move forward on this.
Thank you, Rebecca. The resolution states that the county would commit an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars, but that, as you noted, that would be contingent upon the award of the municipal assistance program. You might know the answer to this, has that money been budgeted to your knowledge?
Yes.
Oh, okay. The answer I was hoping for.
It'll be twenty-twenty-six.
This is, this is.
And it'll be twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-six.
Okay.
We, this is, we've been a server here.
Right.
Okay, okay, thank you both. Mr. Sanada, do you have questions for Rebecca?
Oh, sounds straightforward, thanks.
So us taking this action today then will allow you folks to move ahead with the process of submitting the application, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, Chris? No. Chris, would you care to make a motion for a resolution twenty-nine?
I believe we approve resolution twenty-nine.
I'll second Mr. Sanada's motion. Rebecca, anything else for us on this?
Okay.
Thank you, because we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, Rebecca.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. Next on the agenda would be proposed resolution thirty and our public safety director Chad Strobel is with us. Chad, welcome and good morning.
Good morning.
What Chad has in front of us is asking for a memorandum of agreement and a memorandum of understanding with the following counties, Alachia, Armstrong, Butler, Cambria, Fayette, Indiana, Mercer, Somerset, Washington, and West Maryland pertaining to the governance, operation, and maintenance of a regional public safety radio system controller switch for the inter-county regional radio system, which is known as ICORS. Chad, would you fill us in on some of the details, please?
Yes, we have an existing memorandum of understanding for participation in this radio system. Since that memorandum of understanding has been resolved here in the county, there's been some changes to the governance document, which runs for kind of governance of the organization of a group of people. We've changed the layout of the meetings, what don't take place, but we've added additional counties to the system, historically Mercer was not on the ICOR system, but they're getting a radio upgrade and coming on. Washington County is also in the middle of the radio upgrade and coming into the ICOR group. So we're just updating the memorandum of understanding to include those. So we're just updating the memorandum of understanding to include those counties into the organization and also to update the governance document. Just saying how we have to join, how we're able to leave the system, what our meetings will be, and how the makeup of the bodies. So this is just a redoing the existing MOU to include those changes to the new counties and the governance document. There's no changes to pricing or any jumps in prices or anything out of the ordinary other than our new service update agreements and everything. So that is it. We're just re-upping that MOU to include those few changes.
Thank you. On the MOU and the MOA, do they have an expiration date to them? Do you know?
No. They're open to an interesting party or the interest of party decides to leave.
I see.
It's a governor says that. Now, therefore, the participating county, counties agree to enter county ICOR's MOU with respect to ICOR's. And it'll end when they decide to leave. We just have to give them, I believe it was nine days or a year. But the MOU shows up before the county. It's in the governance document. We have to give a certain amount of time to leave, but it's binding until then.
And I realize what you've explained to us is all pretty basic. Did this, do these changes, do you feel they necessitate having our solicitor look at them? Or are they so basic that you don't think it requires?
We didn't send everything down to Jason if he reviewed it.
Oh, you did already?
Yeah.
Okay.
A week or so ago, I sent off Jason for him to review. He said it looked okay, and then I forgot about the resolution, so I didn't.
Well, as usual, you're ten steps ahead of me. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Oh, you're welcome.
Mr. Sanada, any questions for Chad? Chris, are you willing to make a motion for proposed resolution thirty?
I will. We support resolution thirty.
I'll second that motion. Any further questions or discussion? We'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Hey, Chad, thank you so much.
Thanks, thank you.
Appreciate your time. As we said to everybody else, I'm sure you have to move along. You're welcome to stay, but you probably have a lot to do.
Our recycling is coming up today, so we'll work with IT and that.
Go ahead. Alright. Thanks, Chad.
Oh, thank you.
Stay safe.
Stay warm.
Yeah. Now, we'll go back to under fiscal and contractual. As we noted, we have thirteen repository bids. I'm going to walk through them. Chris, would you be willing to do one motion to cover all of them?
Yes.
Okay, appreciate that. And Chris, as I walk through these, stop me if you have any questions, would you please? It's noted that all thirteen of these, the properties are located in the city of Newcastle. It's also noted that a letter was sent to both the city and the Newcastle area school district informing them that all bid requests must be returned within sixty days or would be deemed approved. The Newcastle area school district did not return their requests, but the city did. And we'll start with the first one. What number should I give this first?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. Thank you. This bid is in the amount of five hundred dollars placed by Ben Lichens for a property on Becker Street in the third ward of the city of Newcastle. It was approved by Newcastle City Council on January seventeen of twenty twenty-five. The next bid, this would be number thirty-two, resolution thirty-two. This bid was made by Adriana Narden in the amount of five hundred and twenty-five dollars for a property on Locust Street in the first ward of the city of Newcastle. City Council approved it on January seventeen of twenty twenty-five. Resolution would be number thirty-three. This bid was made by Adriana Narden in the amount of five hundred and twenty-five dollars for a parcel on Locust Street in the first ward of the city of Newcastle. City Council approved it on January seventeen. Resolution thirty-four. The bid was made by Adriana Narden in the amount of five hundred and fifty dollars for a parcel on Sumner Avenue in Newcastle Second Ward, approved by City Council on January seventeen. Resolution thirty-five. Adriana Narden made a bid of five hundred and twenty-five dollars for a parcel on East Wallace Avenue in the Second Ward. Again, City Council approved it on January seventeen. Resolution thirty-six. Adriana Narden submitted a bid in the amount of five hundred and twenty-five dollars for a parcel on Carlisle Street in the Second Ward of the city, and this was approved by council on January seventeen. Resolution thirty-eight. Adriana Narden submitted a.
Sorry, it'll be thirty-seven.
I apologize. You're right. Thank you for catching me on that. Thirty-seven is a bid placed by Adriana Narden in the amount of five hundred and fifty dollars for a parcel on East Lincoln Avenue in the Second Ward of the city of Newcastle. Council approved it on January seventeen. Resolution thirty-eight. Adriana Narden made a bid of five hundred and fifty dollars for a parcel on East Lincoln Avenue in the Second Ward of the city of Newcastle, and the council approved it on January seventeen. Resolution thirty-nine. Adriana Narden submitted a bid of five hundred and twenty-five dollars for a parcel on Hillcrest Avenue in the Second Ward of the city, and the council approved it on January seventeen. Resolution forty. Adriana Narden submitted a bid of five hundred and twenty-five dollars for a parcel on Bluff Street in the Sixth Ward of the city of Newcastle, and the council approved it on January seventeen of this year. Resolution forty-one. Adriana Narden submitted a bid of five hundred and twenty-five dollars for a parcel on East Madison Street in the Seventh Ward of Newcastle, and the council approved it on January seventeen. Resolution forty-two. Ben Lichens submitted a bid of five hundred dollars for a parcel on Becker Street in the Third Ward of the city of Newcastle, and the city council approved it on January seventeen. Resolution forty-three. Ben Lichens submitted a bid of five hundred dollars for a parcel on Becker Street in the Third Ward of the city of Newcastle, and it was approved by city council on January seventeen of twenty twenty-five. Those are the bids that we've received. Mr. Sanada, do you have any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay. Would you be willing to make a motion for us to approve the preceding thirteen resolutions, starting with number thirty-one and concluding with number forty-three?
I will. We accept all resolutions from thirty-one to forty-three.
Thank you. Chris and I will second your motion. Any further discussion? Here are none. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. We have two warrant registers that have been submitted to us by the county comptroller's office, also known as check reconciliation registers. And they are dated February eleven and February thirteen. Chris, I'll give you whatever time you need to look them over, and then whenever you've done that, I could accept a motion for us to accept these documents. I will accept the warrant registers. Thanks, Chris. I'll second your motion. Do you have any questions about them?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Also in our packet are the minutes of last Tuesday's meeting, which was held on February eleven. And again, Chris, please take whatever time you need to look them over, and once you've done that, I can accept a motion for us to approve the minutes.
I'd like a motion to accept them.
Thank you, sir. I'll second your motion. If there are no questions, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Takes us down to Commissioner reports and comments. Mr. Sanada, you get to go first today.
Well, it was a very cold, bitter weekend, but I did have a chance to get out to Wilmington for the Scout Troop seventy-three annual pasta dinner out there. I think it was a success, and the Scout Troops all did a great job out there. Got some great news. There's going to be five Eagle Scouts coming this year. And Vanessa, you'll be getting a phone call from the Scout leader that's starting the process so we can acknowledge each and every one of these men and women, young men and women who got the ultimate award with the Scouts. So that was really my main event this past weekend. I think the cold weather put a damper on a lot of things. So looking forward to some warmer weather, and that's pretty much all I have for today.
Thank you, Chris. I'll note that within the past week, my two colleagues and I did attend the monthly meeting of the Lawrence County Planning Commission that was held at the Shannick Township building. And they reviewed two proposals, one for an apartment building on Newcastle's south side on Long Avenue. And they also reviewed a proposal for a Starbucks on State Route eighteen, Wilmington Road in Shannick Township. And then this past Friday, again, my two colleagues and I attended a Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce meeting, which was held at Mama Jane's Restaurant on Wilmington Road in Shannick Township. It could turn out, and we had a good dialogue with the folks who attended that meeting. The other final thing I'll note is that after this meeting concludes, the retirement board, which consists of the three of us and the county comptroller and the county treasurer, will be holding our quarterly meeting in this room, and it's open to the public. And then at twelve noon, the prison board, the seven-member prison board, will meet here, open to the public at twelve noon. That's all I have. We'll move down to the next item, which would be a budget amendment for NHDS. And I've lost track of the numbers. What number would this?
Forty-four.
Thank you. Resolution forty-four. It looks as though the Mental Health Developmental Services Office received forty-five thousand dollars through the, I guess, early intervention program?
Yes.
And that comes from the Commonwealth, and they're asking us to earmark it for the what's known as the EI base expense account line item for early intervention. Joe, anything else we need to know about this one?
Typically with EI, they just passed their mid-year because they are on a fiscal year rather than the county's typical calendar year as far as fiscal budgeting. And the state makes the EI program whole. So I'm guessing that midstream, they did a review and said, well, you're going to be a little bit short, so we're going to set you get you up to where you need to be.
Very good. Thank you for giving us that background, and I'll see if Mr. Sanada has any questions.
No.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Chris, would you care to make a motion for this resolution?
Yeah, I will. We accept this resolution.
Thank you, sir. I'll provide the second, and if there are no other concerns, we can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Proposed resolution forty-five is a proposed transfer coming from our capital contingency. The total amount of the transfer is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. Of that, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty will be transferred over to the jail, maintenance and repairs line item. My understanding is that's for water heaters?
Yeah, we have a three-system, a three-container hot water system. Two of them are gone, so we're living right now on one hot water heater. We have to get that. It's an emergency if that hot water tank goes and you don't have any hot water.
Okay, so the sooner the better.
Yes.
The other portion of this transfer would be eighty-nine thousand dollars, which would be transferred over to the voters' office for their major, office major line item. And I believe that, does that involve the voting machines?
The voting machines, it's maintenance and repairs, warranty, information as well as our payment on the voting machines. Originally, we had that scheduled to come out of the grant, the state elected, or felt that the grant wasn't the right line item. So we had to basically shuffle over the money around to make sure we recovered there in the upcoming elections.
Understood. Thank you for that information, and I'll see if Commissioner Sanada has any questions.
No, I just think both of them are worthy, especially water heater. Jail, we ought to see that last one. As far as voting, we had a really great election last year. Efficient. As good as it could get, and I think it's getting these machines taken care of is critical as we move into this year's election cycle. So I will, we accept them.
Thank you. This is resolution forty-five, and I will second the motion. And if there are no other concerns, we could ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Couple of other administrative transfers that we have in front of us. The juvenile probation office is asking for a two thousand dollar transfer from their contingency into that of materials and supplies. We were, evidently, they were installing a door security system in their office. And then the second transfer request comes from, comes from the courts. They're asking for a one thousand dollar transfer from their contingency into their line item of association dues. Chris, any concerns?
No.
Thank you. Would you care to make a motion to approve these two requests?
I will. We accept these requests.
I'll second your motion, and if there are no other concerns, we can have Vanessa call the roll.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
A motion carries.
Thank you. We have a resolution on the table, carried over from last week. This involves a repository property bid on a parcel in Pulaski Township. The reason we're keeping it on the table is that it's our understanding, we've been advised by the tax claim office, that the Pulaski Township supervisors have given their approval. We've also been told that the Wilmington area school board meets tonight. And we're anticipating that they may be voting on that matter tonight. Hopefully, between now and next Tuesday, we'll hear from them. And if so, we can probably take it off the table next week if that's satisfactory to you.
Yes, I think that's appropriate.
Okay. Did I miss anything? So we'll keep it on the table, and hopefully by next week, we will have heard from the other two taxing bodies. Announcements, this board will meet a week from today, Tuesday, February twenty-five, at ten a.m. in this room, so open to the public. In about five or ten minutes, the retirement board will hold its quarterly meeting in this room, open to the public. At twelve noon today, the prison board will meet in this room, open to the public. And finally, the Mental Health and Developmental Services Office would ask us to note that their advisory board's public meetings will be held on the following dates. March sixth, June five, September four, and December four. All of those meetings start at twelve noon. And they are held at the Mental Health and Developmental Services Office. The other announcement I'll note, it's not on the agenda, but our elections director asked us to note the fact that today is the first day that nominating petitions can be taken up for various local offices. And there is a table outside our building, where the, outside of our meeting room, where the election staff is located. And people can come down, and they've been doing it, been watching them out the window. Candidates have three weeks to circulate their petitions. So unless I'm mistaken, the deadline to file would be three weeks from that, right? And, but if you do have questions about what offices are up, I know here at the county level, we have three judgeships. The office of district attorney, the office of register and recorder, and the office of sheriff. And then at the local level, school boards, township supervisors, borough councilmen, I believe borough mayors. I believe borough mayors, and there may be some other various local offices as well. So if you have questions, feel free to call the election office about that, they can give you some guidance. Public comment, Bill, you're our public.
Bill Garment.
And thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Closing comments from my fellow commissioner, Mr. Sanada?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anything from Vanessa or Joe? Okay, thank you both. And Bill, we always, you know, we need to take time to thank you and your staff for always coming in and bringing us to life and that, bringing it back down to the conclusion. So thank you for helping.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Well, if there is no other business to be brought before the board, I'll request an adjournment motion.
Okay.
Is there a second? I'll offer a second. All those in favor, please say aye, I oppose, the same sign, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.